I'd like to call this City Council Regular Meeting to order Wednesday, March 6th at 6:00. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hoffman, Mayor Proton Hannah, Mayor Grundmeyer, all present.
Thank you. The City Council will recess to closed session pursuant to Section 54954 to considering the items listed on the agenda. I'd like to reconvene the City Council meeting for March 6th, 2019. At this time, we'll have a report of actions taken in closed session.
The City Council in closed session discussed the matters that are listed on the agenda and then we'll report our actions.
Alright, thank you. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and then if you'll remain standing for invocation. Councilmember Newton, will you please lead us in the court?
Thank you, Mayor. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Sister Jerome from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, we come today this night to thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy, for being able to live in this area, for being able to live in this great country. We thank you, Father, for the many things that we enjoy in our lives. We ask you, Father, this time, to bless this city, to bless the residents of this city, and bless especially the council of this city, that they may be able to do the decisions that can help the city grow and prosper and do the right thing. We ask you to bless them often their personal lives, that they may have the blessing that they need in their lives. And with these things, we ask, Father, in the name of our dear Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Good job.
Thank you, Sister. So at this time, we do have an adjustment to the agenda, so Mr. King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're asking that Item 5B, which is the Hammer Avenue Bridge replacement initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration be removed from the agenda. The Riverside County Transportation, who is the project overseer, has asked that it be taken off this agenda and will be scheduled or anticipated in April.
Okay. Do we have a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to remove Item 5B from the agenda.
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hoffman, Mayor Proton Hannah, Mayor Grundmeyer, motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, we will proceed to the regular agenda with Item Number 1, City Council Consent, Reports on Regional Boards. Alright, Councilman, or Mayor Proton Hannah?
Well, I attended the RTA, and there every month is an increase in ridership, especially the about 200 of Disneyland every month that increases. It had not just people born in Disneyland, it's people that ride back and forth to work at UCR and everything. But the rates are good, and by now they're trying to determine going to raise the rates for the first time in 10 years. And then the last Friday, had a meeting, a confirmation meeting with the Orange County Transportation, and they've been talking for years about building a flyover coming from the 241 eastbound toll lanes into the 91 freeway toll lanes. And we tried to talk them into delaying their plans because if they start building when they're planning to, we're still going to be doing construction on this end, pardon me, the 15 freeway flyover is going to probably just plug up the whole, not that it's not already plugged up, but that was it on those two things. And then the mosquito abatement, as you know, we're getting lots of rain, the weeds are growing, and the mosquitoes are going to go crazy soon if it warms up for a few days. In fact, they've got a scheduled spring this Friday morning, Norco and Eastvale along the Santa Ana River, because there's one bed of hotbed on the other side of the river up against the Eastvale, excuse me, Eastvale Bank, that really drives them nuts during the mosquito season. They just, for some reason, they, just a large amount of mosquitoes come out of there all the time, and they're always over there working on it. And then, right here, we'll show you a slideshow of assists we did with the button area and animal control last Friday, the NART team. This old horse is 31, and he got down, couldn't get up, so we went over and used our equipment. You'll see here, we drag your high tail on the sled, have a harness on him, we set up our tripod, which is a big horse, and we get him up on their feet. Very standard, we put, get them up on their feet like that, and we put very little weight on there until they can get their balance and get the circulation. And I think that took about 30 minutes before we could completely take the harness off of him, and he could stand on his own, but he was able to stand and walk, and they knew he'd been down at least four or five hours before they called CAL FIRE, so that's one thing that the NART team does. Thank you.
Councilman Hoffman?
Myself like Burwin, and one of the NART callouts and a few other events this year. I mean, this past two weeks, we're going to highlight the fact that at the West Riverside County Conservation Authority's Quarter Authority Board of Directors meeting, our major theme was the capital improvement, and, you know, not everybody's, well, government agencies, I guess, are good at estimating costs because we ran into a project that initially was supposed to cost us $1.5 million, it's come in at $3 million. So, you know, it's one of the things where you see where government and private industry don't always get along, but we made a way to do some adjustments on that. But I'd really like to highlight our Veterans Committee, and you'll see these out on the table, a list of events that was going to be at the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial for 2019 when you go through. These are all the things that your Veterans Committee here at Norco are putting together along with the different agencies. So, take a look at them, but I'm going to highlight the two that were going to come up in March, and that's the one that's on the board now, on Monday, March 25th, at the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial. If you could take 15 minutes to join us, we're going to set a wreath at George's plaque up there on that memorial and pay tribute to him, as he is the Medal of Honor recipient that was awarded to him for his valor. And so, if you guys have the 15 minutes on Monday, March 25th, if you're driving by, just stop in, and we'll say a prayer and say thank you to George and for saving those other guys on his team that day. And then, March 29th, as a Vietnam Air veteran, this is important to me, and for all my other Vietnam veterans, welcome home. But come, join us on Monday, March 29th. We're going to start this in the Poole Barn, and we're going to be serving free breakfast. If I can't get you out there by asking, I'm going to get you some food. So the veterans, let your veterans know, come on out, get some free food. Hopefully have a person from the Riverside County Veteran Services come out. We need to explain the benefits to especially our aging veterans. There are so many of us that don't utilize the services of our Veterans Affairs and what we have available to us, and you need to know what it is, especially as some of our younger guys are returning back from the recent release. There are things that are happening to you emotionally and physically, you need to take care of yourselves. President Trump, the other day, just signed the Suicide Prevention Program for Veterans, and we're going to highlight these things. It's terrible what's going on. And as veterans, for all my fellow veterans, you know, we give back, we want to give back to the community, but as a community, we need to give to them too, so we've got to support them. And that's going to be followed after the presentation by a small ceremony up at the memorial on Veterans Day. So please, March 29th, if you've got time, it's a Friday, come out, join us, this is like breakfast for you. It's free, if you want to give a donation, that's fine, because everything goes back to that memorial. Thank you.
Councilman Bash?
I've attended a lot of meetings. I want to touch on, go to the next slide. At the Western Riverside County Conservation Authority, a couple of things were spoken about which I think apply to Norco. As you know, the Conservation Authority, what you do is you are able to mitigate, to build a one area, you can mitigate by helping to create an environmental, an area for animals and plant life and stuff in other parts of the county. And one of the big topics of conversation is bikes and motorcycles. And part of the problem they're having in these conservation areas is erosion, top vegetation is being killed, nest abandonment by birds, directed indirect impacts on animals, hyper runner equestrian conflicts, and increased liability due to mountain bike injuries. I think that should come back to our question in terms of our Norco hills, are they protected? How are they protected? And if you ever hike up there, I hike up there all the time, if you look at our Norco hills and then go to the Laco line, look at Riverside, where they don't, it forced bikes and motorcycles utilizing that area, basically they've destroyed that side of the hill. And then the other part of it is also this part of it of graffiti and things like that. And one of the topics was talking about engaging high school age kids to work, take care of trails, and then also maybe to encourage environmental scholarships, which is something that maybe it'll bring back as a topic for our council. And then the Western Riverside Council of Governments, the hot topic, of course, is housing shortages across the state, which are quote, "leading to a series of new laws from Sacramento exercising both carrot and stick approach to motivate local jurisdictions to facilitate more construction of housing." Meaning, here's the carrot, we'll let you have your tax money to build your roads, but if you don't, here's the stick to lack you. And so, those things are being, actually, as we speak, there are laws being passed through the Assembly and the Senate as we speak. As you know, Governor Newsom, what priority is housing for his 2019-2020 budget. Talked a lot about the RENA numbers, which for people that don't know what that means, it's a regional housing needs assessment. The housing update cycle will commence later in 2019. Nobody knows what's going to happen. We're anticipating ours will go down, but nobody knows what's going to happen because one of the things that's being put forth, and Steve Hogan knows about this, is the social equity distribution model. And as a job-rich, large-lauded city with very few low-income housing, we are going to have to do quote, "our fair share," and because it's not fair to someplace else to have all the low-income housing. So that's why nobody knows what's going to happen. They talked a bit about the future, they talked about suburbia dying, and basically there's a lot of undertones of the future, living in large lots and areas with elbow room, you're gentrified, and that goes clear back to when we lost all the land, going clear back to the 91 freeway. Right now, the trend is multi-generational households, kids come home, take care of parents, will a robot take my job, and will I be allowed to drive? League of Cities, they came up with pending Assembly bills, several, but the two that sort of piqued my interest was AD847, which provides presidential funding, treatment to cities, meeting housing goals. This basically, as it was explained to us, this is the lever that the State Assembly can come in and say, okay, you haven't done what you're supposed to do, so we're going to keep your funding. They actually don't take your funding, they put it in a fund, and they said, now if you do what you're supposed to do, then you can have your money, but otherwise, you don't get to keep your money. And then, another very interesting bill at the House of Representatives level 530. You may remember when Burwin and I went up to Sacramento to try to retain local control, and we kind of got hosed by the State Assembly and the Senate for the 5G, we could put a cell tower wherever they wanted. Well, what they did was, the governor over Trump had supported us, but it went to the FCC, and they gave it back to local control. Well, HR 530 is a bill that will appeal the FCC overcharge of the 5G local control, and one of the things I don't know, we need to send, they've asked us to send a letter to Congressman Calvert to support that. Just want to make sure. And then finally, I don't know how many of you got this letter from Julian Polanco, and I'm going to touch on this, because I had a meeting with Bill Wolkman and a couple of other people on this. The Leitner Conning Club Foundation sent out a letter because the Navy is building some things, and they weren't objecting to the construction, but they were saying, they were objecting to the statement that there was nothing historic there. And so, they basically said, we're with them, we're getting along locally, but there is historic properties there. Well, Julian Polanco wrote back, and you may have all gotten this, basically that because the Navy has not made a decision, there is no, they're not historic, except in Arconia, which is already on the National Register. And then she went on to say incorrectly that there is no time limit, and that she also incorrectly stated that we could appeal it. Here's the problem. Per the former keeper of the register, which is the highest authority, per an email that he sent, this is actually, they're stating there's no time limit, basically was something they wanted him to sign when he was the keeper of the register, and he refused on the advice of his personal attorney. He considers it illegal, and he's fighting in court. He said, this is something they have literally made up and is not in keeping with Section 106 of the Historic Preservation Code. And that was pertaining, that was to another project he was trying to get done. And then the other thing, the Navy on this trust will also send out an email and said, as long as we don't make a decision, we, we don't have to abide by any decision that the keeper of the register has made. So basically, Julian Polanco telling us there's an appeal process is not correct. So what's going to happen is the OMCF is going to send out a letter. One of the things we're nervous about is that if we go ahead and give it to the keeper of the register, and the odds are, the reason the Navy's not doing this, because they know they'll lose, because it's pretty hard to get around us. But, right now, the keeper of the register is a temporary one, and it's a very political position. They're the ones that screwed up the hangar over at March Air Force Base, and as you know, the keeper of the register just ruled that the mural, whether you like, think it's historic or not, that's on Prado Dam, and there's a lot of politics behind that, was not historic. So anyway, we're kind of sitting on that, but I just want to make sure people understood that, you know, our shipo is very disappointing. This man, who's now the former keeper of the register, is now the shipo of Rhode Island. Why isn't our shipo fighting for our historic resources? And historically, they have not done so. We've had to force every single successful move we make. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so our inner tide pipeline that we've been watching forever, this is under the Santa Ana River, at the south end of Silver Lakes, going further south to Old Hamner in Detroit. So this is just, first photograph is of, we assembled the pipeline on Old Hamner Avenue, and now we are pulling it back through the boring underneath the river. And did I have a second one?
Video.
Oh.
Ready for that one?
Yeah, it's only like two seconds. Okay. Good. So this is just pulling the pipe underneath the river. You can tell how exciting that is. It doesn't look like much, but anyway, so that was a successful operation, and then this week what we'll be doing is connecting both sides of that pipeline to the existing piping, and then doing the flushing and disinfection of the water source. And I believe by mid-March, March 15th, will be completely demobilized and off the site. And so that's my report on that, that's gone very well. Jeff, if you're still interested, there's a $250,000 micro root tunnel that's still underneath the riverbed. And knock yourself out. And then tomorrow is our CBA, a regular monthly board meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think the biggest thing I did was I was able to go on the state water inspection tour hosted by the Metropolitan Water District for a couple of days, learned a lot about the water systems in the state of California, how they get the water down from Northern California down to us, and the complexity of that, both with infrastructure and politics that go along with water issues in California. So with that, we will move on to Item Number 2, which is City Council Consent Items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered separately under the Item Number 3 of the agenda. Were there any cards on any items?
No cards, Mayor.
Do any of the council wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Councilman Bash for Letter D.
Pull G.
Councilman Hoffman for Letter G. Any other requests?
Motion to approve the rest, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve all items on the consent calendar with the exception of Items D and G.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we will proceed to Item Number 3, which is Items Pulled From City Council Consent Calendar. We'll start with Item D. Councilman Bash?
So I talked to Roger today about this, and Brian probably remembers, going clear back to the 90s when we began the urban forest project. And I'm so excited that we have this money, and what I'd like you to do is maybe some things we talked about today was the team you assembled, the sort of tweaking of the urban forest, which trees will be approved, and how you got this money. It's something 25 years in the making.
Well, we're not there yet, but...
Okay, next.
But I do appreciate you recognizing this item. This would be for $325,000 of Prop 68 funds provided through CAL FIRE. And I've been very privileged to work with some of the people at CAL FIRE in preparing this grant, which is actually a much more rigorous process than we were anticipating. So the basics are that we would plant 1,200 trees over the course of three years. The species and distribution would be decided by staff, but we've, we'll be assembling a technical advisory council. We've got PhDs from Norco College, Cal Poly Camona, NUC Riverside, all plant scientists that can assist the staff, Chad and Brian and their staffs, in selecting the kind of species that not only look beautiful, but fit with Norco's very particular micro environment. We're very pleased that we have some wonderful partners participating, and we have a commitment from Norco High's Ag Department. It's a great opportunity to get young people involved in a project like this, and not just, and I'm not just talking about digging holes in plant trees, but in terms of managing the project. We've got the California Conservation Corps as well. So it's, it's going to be an exciting thing. From my perspective, there's definitely economic development aspect to this, because good-looking streets invite business, and there's also, there have been many studies that indicate that a good urban forest enhances property values as well. You ought to be happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions?
Yeah, and I'm glad that Karen brought this up. Initially, if you were wrong, we had 600 trees that are on the chopping block, is that true, Chad, that we had removed because of the problems with power lines, and they're just, they're decaying and dying of disease. So this is a good start to replace these, and one of the things, when I talked to Ron and I talked to Director Petrie, was the fact that even though it's 1200 trees, they're just going to be small, 15 gallon ones, we have some launches there, is that correct? And go to a bigger size we have to or where we can't?
Yes, I think there are some options. One of the reasons we're, we propose to establish this technical advisory board is so that if we do make changes to the, to our concept proposal, that we have a basis for doing so, we have technical expertise adding us. So if the residents of that advisory council recommends larger plants, larger trees, we can adjust our budget and do that, maybe plant fewer trees and put larger blocks. So it's all, it's designed to be negotiable, to be fluid.
Can you share with our audience the residents' buy-in on these trees and their responsibilities there?
Sure. First of all, I should, you might, you might recall seeing in top stories not long ago, when we first applied for our, when we were in our first phase of this application process, which was successful, we polled the citizens in Norco, and we got a very good response. It was like a 10% response rate, and overwhelmingly, people wanted to have trees in the parkways in front of their homes. They were really interested not only in seeing more trees in Norco, but making the commitment to take care of them in front of their own home. CAL FIRE is very concerned about ensuring that when one of these programs is funded, that the trees that are planted are going to be maintained, that there's going to be some program in place so that they survive for the long term. And part of this proposal involves providing, it's not, nothing's happened yet, but providing some kind of financial incentive for homeowners who might have, want a tree in their parkway and want, and want to care for it. Maybe it's a discount on water bill, maybe it's a reward, a monetary reward after one year if the tree is flourishing. And we also have a very ambitious public outreach and education program built into this that will make it less intimidating to take care of trees, make it feel less of a chore, and something that people really want to do. We have workshops from West Coast Arborists, from our technical advisors as well, these professors, they can teach people how to take care of a newly planted tree and take pride in it, and that'll be a big part of engaging the public family in wanting a healthier forest, but actually being a part of maintaining it. Thank you.
So in light of the loss of all our youth in the district, or the Silas, and then the California, all of our pepper trees, California peppers were planted in the 30s. They're now, they've lived out their life cycle, and Edison's tree for them. This is really a welcome change, and I really want to applaud you and CAL FIRE, and thank you guys very, very much for this. This is, this is, like I say, 25 years in the making, so thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Item D.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to our next item, which will be Item G with Councilman Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just spoke to Director Chad at least earlier, and I just want to go over with it to make sure that the residents understand. Every time we get near Western Avenue, people there, oh, they're going to open the college. A-Grands, we're doing things over there, so Chad can explain to how we're actually, what we're going to do over there, especially in front of the A-Grands and that property, so the residents are understanding.
You mentioned Western Mountain.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mountain.
So Mountain, specifically what we're doing is a two-phase project. The first half of the phase between Second and the college is a full re-destruct. The road is in fire condition, it needs to be completely re-destructed. However, the road between Second and Burke Street, we're only doing a small grinder overlay project, really just as a Band-Aid, even though it's really bad street also, because we're anticipating at some point there may be a future project in the next year or two related to the A-Grands. At that point, that development will require to completely re-destruct and widen that roadway as part of their development project. So we really don't want to spend money now, or have it completely redone, or part of it done by the developer if that project goes through. So this particular treatment's only intended to get us through the last couple of years, and it's a minimum, but it'll certainly be better than what folks have been driving lately. That's our intent as far as how to address Mountain.
Okay, just to ensure that we're not opening Mountain for the college.
This is nothing to the college.
With that, Mayor, unless you have any questions, motion to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item G.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is public comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment.
Bill Mailer.
Getting ready to put your name down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't know how many of you have been over on California, but I had to go to a meeting outside the city Monday night, and on my way back down to California, as you know, recently the city was kind enough to put in the new trail fencing along California, which does of course help identify it a lot better. I'm hearing a lot of positive comments from the residents along that street. The thing that I did notice that Monday night was that with all the rain that we're having, we've got a lot of little weeds and things. Now, council, oh, about a year ago, had a real problem with Third Street because of all the new fencing and trail that was put in, and they finally made notice of it, and I don't know exactly what you were able to do, or who you were able to talk to, or it was just the residents, or code enforcement, or whatever, but Third Street has cleaned up really nice, and I love riding down on my horses on that. But now California, with all the nice fencing, we're starting to get weeds. Now, heaven only knows, we've had a lot of rain, and we all get weeds, and I've got them on my property too, and we keep whacking them down. But when the weeds are actually as high or higher than the fence, then we've got a problem, and there are several properties along that. So I decided to bring it to your attention, and maybe the powers that be can approach some of those property owners to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Slater.
Last chance, this Saturday's our casino night. I know a number of you have your tickets. If you don't, oh, look, it breaks getting his wallet out. So tonight, I do have tickets with me in case anybody still needs tickets for casino night.
Change for a hundred?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jim Pollard.
Grab his buddy now.
I'm here to discuss the weed abatement situation that's on the river road between Kids Corner and Cora. It's behind my property and several others that we don't have access to because it's an Edison easement. And in the past, the city has always cleaned up the weeds of the prisoners, but again, this is an Edison easement. I was wondering if they could be addressed to do immediate abatement on that. And, you know, they should be good custodians for that easement that we don't have access to, and it's a eyesore to that part of the city. I think that's it. I'm not too happy with them. You know, we have a representative, and she never seems to show up or come to these, and I try to address her, and I don't get any response back from Ms. Flores, so thank you. Maybe, I don't know, maybe you can get something off of her chat or something, see if they can respond, save the city some money.
Thank you.
Jeff Kanghan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All that talk of trees reminded me that I wanted to remind everybody else that this weekend is the one-year anniversary of us planting 14 very special trees up in High Street Park, most notably the one for Benetta Ben Badal, who was in the process of moving here to Norco with her family when she was tragically killed in a terrorist attack in San Bernardino. So it's been a year. That Hertz shaped memorial in her honor looks beautiful. If you haven't been up there, please go visit it, and her birthday would have been Friday. So that's why we did it last year in the timing to try to do it right around her birthday. So that's a wonderful place to go and just have some time and just reflect on the purpose of why we planted that. But with all the stuff that we do for our veterans, we also, we try to honor those victims as well and other things. So for the crowd, the citizens, the council, if you haven't been up there lately, I encourage you to go up and check it out again. It's been a year, and it's starting to bloom and look nice, and it's a wonderful place to go and reflect. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we're going to item number five, which is discussion action items. The order of presentation for discussion items is as follows. We'll have a staff report presentation, council questions of staff, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral, council discussion, and then action of the council. So with that, we are going to start with item A, process and status review of accessory building regulations, and that will be a report from Mr. Keen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This is a follow-up report from the new regulations that are going to affect in 2017 for accessory buildings. We have a six-month review that resulted in some changes to the code at that time, and so it's been about a year. This is a follow-up to that, and the intent of this is to report what issues and concerns and questions and problems have come up since that time. The only real issue that's come up, and it's come up several times, is the regulations for the maximum height for large vehicle parking structure, RV. Currently, the way that the code reads is that the maximum height is the lesser of 18 feet or the highest point of the primary dwelling. And if you have a one-story dwelling, this pretty much means that you can only go to the height of your one-story dwelling, which cannot accommodate a RV vehicle in that law of the structure. So we've had several people come in and ask about it, and the only way for them to be able to proceed is to both fill out the accessory building permit application and the variance application in order to be relieved of that height restriction. And so, you know, their complaint is it's unfair to them, whereas someone with a two-story house has the ability to be able to get high enough to accommodate a recreational vehicle. So it's presented to the city council for direction. There is a mock change to the municipal code if the city council determines that it should be changed, and I'll read that very quickly. It would be changed to read that the maximum allowed height at the peak shall be the lesser of 18 feet for the highest point of a two-story primary dwelling, or 18 feet for a one-story primary dwelling. And that would then allow people with one-story homes to have the same opportunity that people that have two-story homes. But we're seeking direction. If the council determines that you would like to see this presented for discussion and recommendation to the planning commission, then we'll take it to them, and it will come back to you, however they recommend, whether for approval or denial. If the city council is satisfied that the rules the way they are defined, then it won't be processed any further. So that'll take direction.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do council members have any questions of staff? Councilman Hoffman.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Governor Mayor. I was sitting on the ad hoc committee meeting when we talked about the accessory buildings, and I guess I'm just confused because initially I thought we solved this problem by, we know that in California, the highest height for the vehicle is 14 feet. We allow it for two feet for a roll-up on a roll-up door, and that's a theory, that's why it went to 16, and then at least two feet for the pitch of a roof to get 18. And I understand where, I guess, I wasn't diligent enough to read, where the one-story building height came in, because I thought we had resolved this with doing accessory building.
You are right, the ad hoc committee did address this, and we had those discussions, but I don't remember the details of how it came out, but this is how it came out, so this is what's happening.
Councilman Newton, unless you've got a better recollection?
Of course I do.
Yeah, I know.
Steve, let me start with my first question, and it's back in your summary background. I'm just a little confused, just middle of the paragraph on summary background, as a result of the follow-up report to city council upon recommendation of the planning commission, adopted regulations that extended the mailing radius boundary to 200, or to 300 feet, or the distance to 25 property owners. Why is that in here? And it doesn't relate because we made that revision to mailing radius boundaries years and years ago?
It's in here just as a summary. It actually just happened last year. So it was done for other public hearings, the mailing radius for other public hearings. But this is a unique, because this is technically not a public hearing. It has a mailing radius to the neighbors, but it's not a full-on public hearing as described in the municipal code. So you're correct. Many years ago, we changed it for all public hearings to 300 feet or whatever distance needed to get to 25 property owners. But because this is not technically an official public hearing, it wasn't changed for us.
It just confused me a little bit on why it was there. So back onto the height, that to the E height, and I don't want to use the word punitive, but I think Ted, that on the ad hoc committee, when we started looking at one-story homes, and it also morphed into the conversation of you do not have cookie cutter lots. And so you had, let's say your backyard was an up slope, that any building would dwarf the overall height of the house, and then conversely, if it was a down slope or if it was a level lot. So I think that's where we kind of got twisted around with that, but I don't think our intent was ever to be punitive between a one-story and a two-story home. That, and you are correct with those numbers, that I think what we went to was 16-foot E and then a peak height of 18 feet. And it was to be regardless whether it was a one-story or a two-story home. I guess one of my questions to you, Steve, is the way you have this revision written for a two-story primary dwelling, you have, or the highest point, so if that two-story dwelling was 30 feet at the peak, we would allow an accessory building 30 feet tall at the peak?
No, it's...
Or you're saying or the highest point of?
It's the lesser of, 18 feet or the highest point of the house.
So do we need or the highest point in there? Or can we just say 18 feet?
We could do that.
You do need to say lesser of.
Yeah.
Lesser of, not high, but not take out the highest point?
Or we just make it 18 feet for everybody, regardless of the height of the house.
Does that make us in trouble anywhere?
No. In fact, if you look at the table above, there's one highlighted in the cases that have been approved in the past year, and that one was approved, this is someone that had a one-story house, and they were able to bring the height of the RV building down by making the roof flat, so they didn't make pitch of the roof of the primary dwelling, which is one of the design guidelines, and they had to let the air out of the wheels in order to get it inside the building.
Yeah, and I don't think that was ever our intent to, like I said, punish a homeowner to say you have to re-sess your slab for your path of your tires. I'm fine, just leave everything at 18 feet. That's going to work for any RV. With an E height of 16 foot, I mean, that's the critical dimension that you have to keep. And we still say we'd graduate at setbacks, though.
Correct.
That's all I have. Does that help you, Ted?
No, that makes it easier to read, that's why I was trying to unconfuse it.
Any other questions of staff? Councilman Bash.
So it would not affect the setbacks, so in other words, you can't be five feet from a property line, have a building 18 feet, and there are some properties that simply will not be able to accommodate this.
Correct.
Just as a sort of a matter of history, people need to understand, for example, the bluffs. Did you know there's no two-story houses allowing the bluffs? That was the matter 10 years. And what happened is this specific plan was tossed, or forgotten, or lost, and they began to build two-story houses, but that was the promise. So you notice these two-story houses, and there's some gigantic buildings there. So I have a concern that we make sure that for all of these buildings, we do our due diligence. Also, first and foremost, the neighbors, you use a protective per on municipal code. They are protected. You have a right, if you're going to get a special privilege, you have a right to expect the municipal code to be followed. In the course of my travels, I discovered nobody knew how to measure a building, or more correctly, every building was measured differently. Do we have a solid way now of measuring how high a building's going to be? There are buildings that measure 17 feet, but they're really 24 feet, and I want to make sure that we have one way that we measure all of these buildings. Setbacks, and he already asked that. I mean, one of the things that's just really hard for people to understand is that when Norco was developed, it was specifically developed to make it difficult to break up properties so that a developer couldn't come in. There are long, narrow lots, there are irregular lots, and that was done beginning, actually in 1948, when we fought the Riverside one-size-fits-all zoning, and we became a city, and the reason we had that zoning was it would be harder for a developer to...
to come in and buy ten lots. And so, somebody can always hold out in that literally irregular shape, which stopped high-density crack-a-box housing. And that is the reason we have the zoning we have today. That's the reason that there's actually room to put a motorhome on your property. The problem is these large buildings destroy the rural lifestyle, and the way they do that is, the reason that people keep their large lots is it costs a lot of money to put animals on it, but they're willing to spend that. There's not enough people who want to build a gigantic building that will sustain the large lots. So, I just want to make sure that we still have the setbacks, that maybe you could get back to me, Steve, so we can have one way of measuring buildings. The other concern that I have is in two thousand and ten, we handled this, and as you know, the planning commission was misinformed, the height of the building was fourteen feet, and I want to make it so as I looked at all the buildings that were approved, of the seventy that were approved, about fourteen feet, many had more, five, six hundred feet larger. What's supposed to happen is, is that this sits in your, literally, per the municipal code, something that isn't, was not followed even lately, it has to sit in your office, and every time there's an inspection, that original permitted building must be looked at to make sure, and it's not your fault, I'm not really, I'm sounding harsh, but I'm surrounded by these buildings now. The, we have to make sure that what is built is actually what was approved. There are issues where all of a sudden the buildings are two, three feet higher, and Greg makes a very good point, in that you have buildings that sit up on hills. In fact, we had one building that is towering over the neighbor. I found out later, rather than be smart and just build it on the land as it was, we forced that property owner to raise their property ten feet to make it level with the front of the house. Well, if you're at the house behind it that's twenty feet behind, that thing towers, and it's just totally unnecessary. One of the still basic things in our municipal code is we have certain things that we're supposed to follow. Other than that, I don't have a property eighteen feet, provided there's the setbacks, and as long as people do understand, not every property is going to be conducive to the kind of buildings that you want to build. That said, as I looked at a lot of these buildings, there are places where for some reason we put the building toward the front of the property, when you could have put a gigantic building toward the back and never would have known it was there on some of these long narrow lots. I think a lot of these buildings can be built if we just, one, neighbors rule, that's our code, and two, I think just be careful how we permit them to place them. And that's all I have, Madam May, thank you.
Erwin, did you have anything?
Yeah. Let's give Steve. On this eighteen-foot height, now, say you've got a piece of property, that in a lot up in town, there's a road in the backyard from the water runoff and stuff like that. So, this eighteen feet, if I was going to build a, build it, I'd build a pad up two or three feet to keep water from going in there and running and everything. Now, is that eighteen feet, is that included? The height, that two or three-foot pad plus the slab on top of that and an eighteen feet above that, that's, say that's twenty-one feet that it'd be from the top down to the rest of the property. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. The height is measured from finished grade, and it has to be measured five feet away from the building itself. So, you can't be grading to build a building on, and it can't, it can't be just a pad with the size of the building right at the edge of the swamp.
Right. And that, what I'm saying is, that's going to make it twenty-one feet from the rest of the, rest of the yard to the top instead of eighteen feet. Does that work?
Yeah, if you're, well, it, every, as we discussed tonight, every lot is unique in the city, but generally, for instance, if the rear yard is down slope from the primary dwelling, and then the property beyond is yet to lower, they will be looking at the building higher than the end if they build the pad up.
And that's legal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this comes back, back to what you said, Joe, just so your, so that everybody knows, but for the Norco Ridge Ranch, we do not have graduated setbacks, if you're correct. Thank you.
Councilman Bash?
So, there was a property over in the bluff site that they built an accessory building, and they were forced to bring the property up to the level of their house. Is there a way that, and one of the problems I said was the engineering in terms of just water runoff, but why is it that we can't, on the site, go, hey, you know what, we don't need to build this up, because otherwise it would tower over the neighbors? And they built the same building, but not build it literally, they built, they were forced to build this up ten feet. So, now the building just towers over the entire neighborhood, but more importantly, it towers over the people down the hill from them. And the truth is, as I looked at it, if it had just been built on the original grade, and they did the engineering for the runoff, you never would have known that building was there. Basically, it would have been down low ten feet. I mean, you know, they have a right to build, but that would have solved a lot of U problems. Is that possible?
Well, yeah, and the good thing about, the good thing about the new regulations that have been out, and each of these are reviewed by the planning commission, so if that's brought out, that they're building an enormous pad higher up to put the building on, that's something they can address in their approval. It would be difficult to come up with a rule that applies equally to everybody in the city, because everyone's lots are sort of...
Well, no, I don't think you could do that. I think if you go to the bad and you think, okay, they want to build this nineteen-foot-high building, why then build it out at ten feet? It's not twenty-nine feet. The, there's like three lots that have that same scenario. Those three lots, rather than build it ten feet, you just, you work with what the landscape is as you find it. If you do that...
And with the eyes of the planning commission being additional eyes on the approval, where that wasn't the case before, I think we're going to not realize those kinds of situations.
So, the list that they have now is proving useful?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have, Madam, thank you so much.
Councilman Newton?
Steve, back to the answer that you gave, Erwin, and I believe also to Kevin, on measuring the height of the building, you're saying you go out to the pad area, five foot out from a pad?
We go out five feet from the outside walls of the building to measure.
To determine the height.
Right.
See, I don't see how you can make that work. And like what Erwin said, let's say you have to build your pad, or maybe it's not ten foot, but you have to build up your pad two foot around, okay? And that's just for drainage to let, you know, water go around. You're actually reducing the height of the structure by two feet. All building measurements are taken from finished floor, concrete slab, okay? So, in theory, if you're not taking that measurement, which is standard in all industry, from the slab, and you're saying, okay, you built it up two feet, your pad area before your slab, then your eve height's been reduced by two feet. You see what I'm trying to say?
Well, me...
It's not the correct way to measure.
Well, you're right. And one of the reasons the code has that provision in it is to prevent exactly what Councilman Merhanna was talking about, where you just build up a pad the size of the building, and the building sits on that pad. The idea, the idea behind it was that if you need to raise your property, then you're going to raise it. You're not going to raise it just because, just for the building to save itself. So, the way the code reads right now, the measurement is from ground, and it's five feet from the outside of the wall. So, they probably do lose six inches of height with the, with the floor, because it's not measured from the floor, it's measured from that, that level five feet, whatever it is, whether it's a manufactured pad or the original ground. But that was to prevent exactly what Councilman Merhanna was talking about, where they just build up a pad and just put the building on top of it. It was meant to make sure the grades are being done, because it has to be done for whatever the situation is.
I'm not agreeing with that. I know what you're saying, and I have that for sure in my mind, but I think you may find that you're going to have a situation that's going to live with someone. You have a world-class architect on your planning commission asking the question where measurements are taken from, and his answer's going to be from the finished floor. So, that's my only comment on that. Thanks.
Councilman Bash?
The issue is, is that, and this is what I'm trying to determine this, is as you begin to grade, one of the other challenges we have is, what is mass grading? You can have as many as thirteen dump loads, and that's not considered additional earth, and then what happens is you literally raise the entire property. So, if you go five feet out, you've still raised everything. I know one building that was raised before anything was done, three feet, and they just graded out, and I'm telling you right now, I know for a fact that was mass grading, and we just didn't have an engineer that, frankly, just, he was wrong. And so, that's the problem we have, is people playing games. So, you're saying you should measure from the top of the slab?
Yeah.
So, the problem is, is when you raise it four feet, you now have, like the situation I referred to, it's four feet higher than it's supposed to be, because you've just raised the ground up that high. And what you're trying to do is you're trying to avoid flooding your property, and then what you've done is you've now arranged a flood all the way around it. So, I just think that's something maybe your planning commission needs to look at.
I would agree with that, but the accessory building in itself is structured, and that's the way to determine the height of a structure. It's not the grade in the pad or if you had to fill or cut.
So, if it keeps going the way it looks like it's going, we would be taking the two issues back to the planning commission.
I agree with that, yeah, because we need to clarify where you're measuring these eve heights, because we had this discussion in the ad hoc committee meeting, it was a structure in the measurement for the pad, the finished pad or concrete structure at this point.
Finished floor.
The finished floor, thank you. Because that's where, if I'm a carpenter, that's where I'm going to build from. So, yeah, we need to clarify this back with the planning commission.
But I think we're okay with the sixteen-foot eve height? Provided there's still gradual setbacks.
Any other questions from council? Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Puri Ortiz-Solun.
Good evening, council members. I came with a lot to say tonight. I've emailed, and hopefully you've had the opportunity or the time to look at some of my emails. So, I don't want to go on and on. Thank you for those of you who replied back to me. But basically, our issue is with the ordinance in question, in which we have a one-story home, and we're trying to build an RV garage to house our new RV. We just moved into the area not too long ago, and in the past year, in searching for homes, we continue coming back to Norco time and time again, as other areas as well, but we were never discouraged. By looking at the large RV garages personally, we thought that people were building really nice structures. That was our opinion, so the large garages never discouraged us from wanting to move to Norco, and, you know, we really liked the rural, the rural atmosphere. So, although we're not horse owners, we do love animals and we respect the lifestyle. But again, when we moved into our house, we experienced, and our experience, a large volume of rodents. In fact, when we started our RV the other day to take it in for servicing, there was a raccoon living in the engine. So, you know, we just, we want to protect our investment. Now, you talk about, Mayor Bash, about not obstructing people's views. I can understand that. I think we're good neighbors and we try to respect other people's rights, and we wouldn't want to do something that would, you know, not work for a neighbor. The back of our property does look back to the Waymake Park where the prison's at, so we don't have any neighbors behind us. Most of our neighbors have RVs, currently do have large structure, you know, large RVs. But the point I'm getting at is that you talk about not obstructing people's views. However, how do you address the issue of accessory dwelling units, which is now state mandate, where people can build accessory dwelling units or second units on their home, which are like small homes? So, that will just be, I think, another issue that will need to be addressed. So, thank you for bringing to, bringing forth the issue of the large structures. We would like to, you know, continue coming to the meetings and hopefully that, you know, that can continue to be addressed, but ultimately, we don't think it's fair that a two-story homeowner can build a large structure and we don't. It just feels like an economical disadvantage to us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all the cards on the side.
All right, thank you. So, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and council action.
So, I think we just addressed, I think we just addressed that. Also, for myself, I misunderstood its thought placement. Here we get twenty naked fields, you're not blocking anybody's view, it's more about placement. And in the past, we've had issues where people insisted on placing it five feet from the fence, we had to address that. So, I think that, given what we've done here, it's going to help you, and also, it's again about placement of your building. In terms of the secondary units, they, we may be required to do that, but they're not going to be fourteen feet high. They won't be two-story, they'll be one-story. And so, that really is going to become an issue, but I think we're going to be able to help you.
Any other comments from council?
I think, like Kevin said, I think we fixed it, and we're going to make it allow the eighteen feet, just like we did originally, and the rest of the issues are going to go back to planning, correct?
Yeah, the next step will be advertised public hearing for ordinance to revise the current rules, some maybe recommendation, and then we'll come back to council for adoption.
Did you, just for the sake, so if I could have formed a motion, I'd just approve it, unless somebody else has something else to say, could you read back how we're going to fix this, so we don't have that confusion on height?
Yeah, the first thing is, we are going to change it to maximum height of eighteen feet for all residences regardless of whether it's a one or two-story.
With the setbacks.
And graduated setbacks aren't changing. And then the second thing is, we're going to define better the measurement of the height of the building and where it's taken from.
But we're certainly sixteen feet.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, I make a motion to approve those changes.
Yeah, no, you're sending them to planning commission.
Okay, send the planning commission, and make, approve those changes.
Okay, it's been amended, sensitive to send this to planning commission, those recommendations?
Vote on assignment.
Okay, so then moving on to the next one, we're going to move to item five C, which are options for potential Proposition 218 hearing to increase the annual assessment levy for landscape maintenance District Number Two, Western Pacific, Track Number Two Five Seven Seven Nine, and we will have a report from Dominic and Brian.
Is that okay, Brian, if I start off? That is correct. I guess Brian doesn't want to speak tonight, he would like to. Yeah, last two weeks, couple weeks ago. Yeah, last two weeks, couple of weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago, he asked us to come back with a couple of different scenarios, basically directing for Norco Ridge Ranch Road and Hidden Valley Parkway to see what the costs were for those, and how they impact the assessment districts and what they look like. The, what I would go through... Go ahead, give me the next one.
Once we get the right piece of plan, we can operate this. This is the same budget we looked at last week, or two weeks ago. No further chance of a good move through yet, to get back to what we want to discuss this evening. Again, that's the map that we looked at last two weeks ago of the district number two. These two from here. Move the next one. Just tell me when you want to move. Next slide. Next one. Okay, now we start with the issues that we wanted to begin with. What you see in front of you is an overview of what we have in the two streets, can the slopes, and the costs associated with them. As you can see, the grand total for everything that's along the Hidden Valley Parkway and Norco Hills Road, in the budget today is a little bit over, almost sixty-eight thousand dollars is part of that budget. It breaks down to like thirty-four thousand for Hidden Valley and thirty-two thousand for Norco Ridge Ranch Road. The trail fencing is the next below that, and trail fencing basically is another sixty-eight thousand dollars of fence replacement, we're going to move forward to that, which was on Hidden Valley Parkway. And Norco Hills Road is another eighty-three, eighty-four thousand dollars of replacement. So those are the numbers that we're going to be dealing with shortly when we get into the different scenarios. Okay, slide number one, which is the option number one, which is the basis that everything else is built on. What we have here is, the first line in there is the budget itself, what we collect today, which is the shortfall. The second box down is what is necessary to balance that budget, again, with a two percent trail reserve maintenance type fund, certainly for maintenance, that was discussed at the public meeting that we had about a month ago. Everybody kind of agreed that it's kind of important to have something in the budget so we can replace fencing as somebody knocks down or they fall down, just small sections and holes, not major projects. The next third box down is, on that box is what is necessary to repay the city for the deficit that has been created over the past three, four years, and what that adds to it. Now, that seventy-six dollars and some change is really over a five-year period. After five years, the city has got their money back. What that means is that the assessment district over today's dollars, not counting CPIs, and not counting, put anything aside for the water going up next year, nine percent, is almost three hundred dollars of assessed, increased assessment over today's assessment, which brings the total up to nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. And that's the basis for what we're going to move on from here. Option two is, again, the first three boxes down is a sample of what we looked at in option one. Kane, the next thing is, what does it cost to replace the fencing? If we go on the basis of option one and add the replacement in which is the fourth box down, that adds a hundred and forty-one dollars to the budget. Now remember, we're already collecting seventy-three, seventy-six dollars in the third box down, which repays the city in five years. So then after five years, the city's been repaid, and then we start the ten-year process to replace the trail fencing. So again, that now is about four hundred and forty dollars increase in the budget over today's assessment. Substantial. This is where the cost that we took last two weeks ago, basically, the city got to go back and figure out if we pulled out Norco Ridge Ranch, Norco Ridge Road, and we pulled out Hidden Valley Parkway, what is the impact? So we go on to option number three, which is the next slide. We take the first three boxes in, that's option number one. The fourth box down, that is option number two, and that is the whole kit and caboodle in there, the city gets paid back in five years, the balance of the budget is balanced, and we have a ten-year program to go ahead and repay the city for, excuse me, to construct trail fencing through the whole district. Now what I did was I took out the two other streets, I took out the slopes that are associated with those streets, I took out any parkways associated with the streets, any water associated with those two streets, and the trail maintenance themselves. Not trail fence replacement, just the trail maintenance. And that dropped that assessment down almost three hundred and ten dollars. So now we're back down to seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, which is a hundred and thirty dollars over this year's assessment. And if we go back to option number one, you can see that it's actually less than option number one, where we had a quote balanced budget on today's numbers, we also had a city repayment. So by taking those two roads out of there, you've actually reduced the budget over what it could have been if we just balanced the budget with assessment increase. Substantial savings to the district. But again, the city now has to pick up the tab for the maintenance of those slopes, the water of those slopes, and the maintenance of the trail and the parkways. But again, trail fence replacement is still the responsibility of the district in that Option number four is, this option is the city forgives the debt. We take the seventy-three dollars or seventy-six dollars out, the city pays that out of the general fund, the scones out of it, and then we start replacing, but we include in the trail fencing replacement. Now ironically, or mathematically, what better word for it, is that the bottom line is still the same, because what you've done is you've taken five years out, that city doesn't get repaid, and start that ten-year program immediately. So the bottom line number is identical to option three. It's a matter of, does the city want to get, in these two options, does the city want to get paid back for the debt, or not get paid back for the debt, and start replacing fencing quicker? Bottom line number is still a hundred and thirty-one dollars over today's assessment. So that basically concludes the direction you gave me to start putting some scenarios together, and now it's kind of open discussion of what, if these paths are kind of correct, if you want to go down, which one do you think is best, or if you want to modify. You know, instead of ten years, fifteen years, this whole option. I picked ten years because it's easy to divide ten into a number, and five years because it seemed reasonable to get the city paid back in five years. Ladies and gentlemen, up to you to give me what you want to do next.
All right, so we'll have counsel questions of staff. We'll start with Councilman Newton.
Option number two. On the, just for clarification, on the assessment to repay the city-funded deficit over five years, seventy-six dollars.
Yes, sir.
With, below that, ten-year funding plan for trail fencing, would that start at the same time, or do we wait five years, or can we wait five years till the debt is repaid, and then assess, start assessing the ten-year planned one-trail fencing?
Basically, what option two does is a fifteen-year plan. And the bottom line is fifteen years, and in that fifteen years, the city gets paid back, and trail fencing funding becomes available. You can, ideally, you can break it up, it says, I want to pay the city back a little bit at a time in ten years, but over a fifteen-year period, we get all the trail fencing replaced. It's up to you and how you want to collect the money. I figured, city gets their money upfront in the first five years, then year six, we start collecting money till year fifteen to reconstruct all the fencing.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to just make clear on that. Five years to collect, make us whole on the debt, and then start the, after five years, start the ten-year set aside for the trail fencing.
Yes, sir.
And that's what these numbers reflect.
Yes, sir.
All for now.
Counselman Bash.
In your scenario, did you pay back, pay back the debt, the previous portion, did you downsize that amount, or did you just go, what is owed today? Or did you go, let's say we take out Hidden Valley, we take out Norco Hills, did you take out what our percentage would be going backwards, and then they would pay the difference? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. No, sir, that was not accounted for. It was either pay all the debt back, or pay the other back.
So maybe one of the things we look at is, if we go with taking out Norco Hills and taking out Hidden Valley, they still owe him for whatever amount of money they would owe previously within that new district that we form today. Is that impossible to do, or?
Little bit difficult, yeah. I think it's basically around thirty-three percent is the cost to do the maintenance for the two streets, slopes and all that kind of stuff. So the, except for the admin portion of the budget, you can reduce it and manipulate some type of calculation to make that work.
That's all I have, Senator. Thank you.
Counselman Hoffman.
So, on option two, when you talk about, Counselman Newton did, the assessment necessary to repay the city-funded deficit, those property owners are going to pay the nine hundred and fifty-four for the first five years? Is that correct?
No, sir. We'll be paying the one thousand five.
Okay, so then, but then that's when it kick in to one forty-one? That kicks in at the same time as the first year, or?
It's in the same time as the first year.
Okay, so this is...
Because what I've done is I've reduced the one forty-one. At one forty-one, it should really be, the summation of seventy-six and one forty-one, which is two hundred and some dollars, two hundred and ten, two hundred and nine dollars to do everything. So it's just a mathematical progression to get to that point.
Okay, so that's, and then at the end of ten years, is that from your, from that, from that one thousand ninety-five, now giving them their ten years of trail fencing?
At the end of, at the end of ten years, you're halfway, you've paid the city back, and you're halfway to having enough funds to build...
So it's a fifteen-year project.
It's a fif, scenario number two is a fifteen-year project. To get the city paid back and the trail fence constructed.
I just, I just clarified where I came from, so...
Part of the trail fencing though, could be, because you've accumulated money, you can start replacing fencing, you know, gradually, because you've built up a fund.
Right, we did, yeah. Okay, and, and wow, that's, those are from Brightview, the cost and the utilities, is what it costs to maintain those, do you have a cost breakdown?
That's current cost today, dollars, at our square footage price.
So these, these will increase in the CFP, or the CPI, as it goes through with the ten, fifteen years this is going to be. And Brightview doesn't go down, it just keep going up.
And also includes the water, too, for just...
And that's true.
...right now, which, look at it, increase in water doesn't account for the increase in water next year.
Okay. So, and I like, I, we can play with these numbers all day long, get it different ways, but I see that the, the cost of doing Hidden Valley Parkway and Norco Hill Road is just about equal in cost down here.
Very close.
So you could do one or the other, correct, on option? Let them maintain one, and the city take the other, just as another option. But it's not going to make that much difference, is it?
It will make some difference, but you picked even one of them, that doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
No, definitely, that's what...
Yes, that Hidden Valley Parkway is more of the entryway into that development, and Hidden, Norco Hills Road is more of a continuation into the other LMDs also.
Okay, that's from Brightview, thank you.
Counselman Hannah.
Okay, so then we're going to go ahead and move to public speakers, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Vicki Alvalos.
Good evening, sorry, I don't like to talk in public. I was unable to make the prior two meetings, unfortunately, because I have little kids, and Wednesday night was a bad night. So I don't know what went on in the other ones, but I just have some questions. I know there's a couple of districts that have these assessments. I'm up in the Hidden Valley, I'm up in the sort. And we pay, I don't even know how to read your screen, sorry, I don't know what you're talking about, but we pay an assessment that covers certain things. How much do the people in Norco and the other houses that don't have assessments pay? Does everybody in Norco pay something? Because I just feel like we are being treated different. I understand we have an assessment, and there was contracts or something made long ago when, when these places were put in. But how much is being spent out of the general fund for trail fencing, maintenance, and water, and slopes, and re-debatment, and everything for the houses that don't have assessments? We're at least contributing something. To me, if you want to make it fair, we're all residents of Norco. I don't know why we keep getting separated and treated different. And I could be, correct me if I'm wrong, completely wrong, I could be seeing this different. But if any money is coming out of the general fund towards houses that, or neighborhoods to eat trail fencing, and water, and re-debatment, and all this stuff we're talking about in the Hidden Valley and the Norco Hills, I think you need to start charging them, or giving us credit for what you spend there towards what we pay. Because you're treating us different. Some houses aren't paying any of this, and they're getting their trails taken care of, and they're getting their slopes, and they're getting water, and they're getting all this. So I apologize if I, if I'm missing it up, and again, I don't like to talk in public, so this is, it's a matter of...
Thank you. So I think we're going to have a couple of people answer your questions.
I'll respond to some extent. Unfortunately, what you're doing is comparing apples and oranges. The, the projects that are subject to these districts were approved based upon that contribution. It, absent that, this was a proposal from the developer. If these districts, to fund those facilities hadn't been proposed, the conditions of development imposed by the city would have been different at the same cost. The, those that don't have assessment districts were developed in a different way and at different cost levels, different types of public improvements were required upfront that maybe the, those with these districts, your district didn't require. It's just unfortunately, it's just apples and oranges, that, you're, you're correct that by margin, those that don't have districts don't pay anything extra for the trail fence maintenance, a good example. But the only reason and a condition of those developments do have them was that requirement. Otherwise, the development might not have been approved at the density it was, that there might have been additional public improvements required, all at a cost ultimately to the ultimate home purchasing.
I would just, sorry, I would just respond to that. Somebody who didn't do their homework when they approved at the... Somebody who didn't, didn't do their homework when they approved at the assessment amounts that were allotted back then should have accounted for inflation. Inflation should have accounted for increases in water. I mean, uh, how come the burden is falling on the homeowners instead of the planning commissioner or whoever didn't do their homework 20 years ago or 20, I don't know when all this stuff started?
Yeah.
Should have figured in certain things.
Partly, partly the law, the law that allows these kind of districts doesn't really take that into account. Partly because, you're right, nobody guessed how much the cost of things was going to be. And finally, if they had, your assessment would have been significantly greater from day one. You would have been paying a lot more money from the first day if you were taking into account what you ultimately might have to pay. And, and we wouldn't be having this discussion that the, I guess what I'm saying is the cost wouldn't change. That the only difference would be the city wouldn't be coming to you and asking you to vote on it. It would, if, if it hadn't been taken into account on day one and, and predicted accurately, the city would just would have imposed that. There would have been no Prop 218 and none of this discussion.
But at that time, a lot of people could have decided not to move here. And had it been the developer, you guys might have lost the deal. I mean, a lot of people are taking into consideration, but I see it's, it's falling on the homeowners as opposed to the city. And I see everybody's talking about this, these debts and repayment and possible forgiving. But it seems like all sides, the builder and the city were each, if you want to call it a little bit magic, somebody dropped the ball. But it seems like it's all falling on the homeowners. Now, I understand there's different contracts or whatever, but there's people that are getting nice white fences and there's people getting trails fixed. And they don't contribute anything from their regular taxes. Oh, so.
Yeah, so for some reason, our timer is not working, so I'm going to go ahead and just say that your time is up because it's supposed to go off at three minutes. So real quick, I do want to clarify a few things that I'm going to ask Chad. Will you tell us what is in the budget for trail maintenance and upkeep in non-LMD parts of Norco?
In the budget for the entire city, the budget for trail maintenance is $25,000.
Okay, so anybody not in an LMD, it's $25,000 for the entire city of Norco, which is 15 square miles in whole approximately. Now, as far as the new white fence that was put in in LMD four, that was paid for by the homeowners that live in that LMD. So with that, do we have more cards and can we fix our timer? Who's in charge of the three minutes?
Mayor, do you have one more card? Lisa Blake?
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to assume that the amount here for the trail fence is the white final fence?
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't care if we have a white final fence. So just the regular horse-trip fence and, I think there's even some places in Norco where there's not even a fence. And the, the horses don't need a fence, so, you know, really, I don't care if you have a fence, so we can take that out. That number right there is almost double what I pay. And I'm not for that. And I think, you know, when we had the vote, I think it's been maybe a year ago, it was a smaller increase or whatever it's been. Two years, well, it got voted down by us, but that was, um, I was actually one of the people that voted for it because I wanted to have at least our trees and our greenery maintained. But I'm, I'm not clear on what the amount is that I pay extra in taxes that goes into the city budget that is not my LMD and what is that used for. I know that in my neighborhood, we have a really nice arena that anyone in Norco can come to and I pay for it and they don't. So those are things that, you know, all of that was set forth before I even came and bought my house, I understand that. But I think those are things that should be considered. I've been through one of the neighborhoods in Norco that has an, an arena there and you can't use it unless you live in that neighborhood. But in our neighborhood, anyone can come and I'm happy for them to use it. But I pay for that, there should be some consideration for what we pay for that everyone else gets to use. So that's, I, I'm not for that right there. I hope that there's another option that we can all agree on. So that would be an increase of almost double. So I asked you to look at that a little differently, so we'll figure out something different. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more card I just received. Gloria Chafin?
I too, I too, I'm named Gloria Chafin out of Littlewood, on quarter of stirrup in the division where we're discussing. I don't speak a whole lot, so I need, I need to share just a few things. I've been to most of the meetings, I've been there for 18 years. I have been at the meetings, these gentlemen were talking about. And I believe that the voting, the formal voting that took place was a year and a half or so. And at that time, it was voted down. And it was even, weren't a whole lot of members that voted in, but regardless, it was voted down. Yes, there was another meeting at the park. And what was not shared was that at the meeting at the park, there were people who say, oh, well, you know, because the city had stopped watering the area. And yes, it did not look good. And yes, it's not, you know, what any of us wanted. However, don't want to say you, but the city chose to. It was not the members that chose to because we did not have a vote. It was, a few members went to the meeting and I recognize faces that were there, I was there also. And yes, there was a lot of people who came to outside to the park area who were complaining because the trees hadn't been watered, because they were going to have, they offered, the city offered having permits that we wouldn't have to, we could just connect the water to it, et cetera. But there was still, there was no actual voting. It was a decision made by someone, council members, gentlemen, people from the city, not from those of us who lived in the area because there was no vote taken. And there was a lady there at one of the meetings, which these gentlemen were there just two months ago. And the question came up was, okay, the decision was made for, um, by city, by someone, not the people who lived there. They complained, a lot of people who did go did complain because we don't want the trees not being watered. We don't want the shrubs not being watered. But we didn't make that choice. It was a choice that, I would say, city, don't take it personally, that the city made to continue. And yet we, helping asked, to back pay or to pay for the decision that someone made because we wanted the trees watered. Many wanted that, but people, I heard as well, what you heard. But that was not a formal vote, nor was it what I think should have done. And that should have been about going to the people who actually lived there, about people, the people, I see the timing up there.
Yeah, okay.
About being formally taken by us. And it wasn't. It wasn't taken. So why should we pay everything back when we didn't make that decision? I'm not saying we shouldn't pay any part of that, that's not what I'm saying. But I think that you need to hear that it was voiced at the last couple meetings. And it wasn't a decision that was put to vote. There was a few, 25 people that showed up and were complaining because they wanted, wanted to continue. So I think you need to hear that. That's a lot, it was 80,000, 860,000 being asked to pay back. I realize that you probably weren't here because, just like I wasn't, I've been here since I was the first owner and still am then. Believe me, somebody messed up down the road and we didn't do it because the whole development, we've had costs and costs over and over from this developer who did not do. Someone checking this thing out or whatever. I've had all kinds of costs, of lights being broken. I, right now, cannot, cannot even buy insurance, a flood insurance for my home because all the water comes down. The top of stirrup coming down must come, comes down the street and the, and we've asked for the city engineers, apparently looked at it. These costs are important costs to the city of Norco. But my goodness, I can't buy flood insurance because there is, we've asked the city, the city engineer's gone down to look at it. He will definitely tell you that there is, the water coming down that street takes all of, much of the grain and soil. And this last rain tractor went up, grated the horse trails, grated, even grated the street. And the water, the sand and soil that all collected in front of my, the street in front of my home, all that is just shoved up. I have pictures tonight. There, the sand is higher than the lower, the lowest railing, that's above the lowest railing of the horse trail. And it just shoved it up there.
So then what I would recommend is maybe have those pictures after the meeting and get with, would that be you?
I'm sure.
Get with Brian and Nancy and Ashley.
I'm sure, I'm sure they know about it.
Probably, yeah.
It never has to, to talk to again.
I would never come up, I've just been listening to them talk, but I've been here two, you know, the last couple of years. But I want you to know that we can ask for it, that's a lot of money and we're just talking about horse trails. Maybe you talk about proper drainage in the area.
Thank you. That's all the cards on the side.
Thank you. So we're going to bring it back to council for discussion. Okay, thank you, Councilman Bash.
So I was here. I was here. I fought the development. Because the reason we fought the development was there were supposed to be five and 10-acre parcels. And we were told that they would not impact the people that lived in Old Town Norco. We had all just finished paying a ginormous bond on our suburbs and water, much bigger comparatively in terms of just percentages than was paid up in the hills. We were told, and you are right, the truth of the matter is, I'd like to punch every council person, there were three of us here. And we were told that it wouldn't impact us, that the people who lived in these developments would take care of all the costs, there'd be no problem. And of course, I think all three of us said, well, what happens when they have to vote on the new increases? We just shut off their water. And what happened is here, we zoned a half-acre parcels. My street personally was destroyed. That was a trade-off. You guys take care of your area, but I live on Pedley Avenue, I butted up to hills. So the trade-off for the people in the flatlands was the loss of the hills, which were specifically zoned in 1964 to only build five and 10-acre parcels. And we were told, don't worry, we never have to worry about it. And the reality is, three of us that were here, we'd sit there all by ourselves till midnight. And once they approved it, in one of the great boomdoubles of all time, you're not supposed to see any houses up in the hills, they're all supposed to be hidden. They did massive grading. And for that, we were told we would not be responsible for the infrastructure needs. And as they built it, we watched it get totally a cluster. And it was very, very hard for us because we, we couldn't stop the trucks, we couldn't stop anything. So now we're in a, we're in a situation ironically, where we're really trying to work this out for you. But understand, this is the last city in the state of California by law, the entire city, you build on a half acre. Had it not been for the sacrifices of the people in the flatlands, you never would have had your houses in the hills. I can remember this room was packed the night they sold us the boomdoppel. All these big pictures of what it would look like, none of it was true. So forgive my anger, but there's, there beginning, there was this whole thing between the Flatlanders and the people in the hills that is no longer there. So the unfairness goes back 25 years when the people in Flatlands, Old Norco, said, we'll trust you, council. Four of them were dead. So right now, what we're trying to do is I think arenas, by the way, that's one of the selling points. Hey, they'll pay for an arena for the people all over Norco. Those are all the carrots that they gave us. So understand that. Now we embrace everybody and truly, I think this council, we're going to try to find ways to work this out. But understand, we had to get more fire and police, none of that was covered. There's all these things that we had to come up with that basically, truthfully, we were lied to. Had we known what was going to be built, it never would have been built. Had we known you guys would be saddled with these taxes, it never would have been built. Because that's the only way you could build it. And it's the only way the people in the Flatlands said, okay. And that's a fact. It changed the destiny of this town. Thousands of homes built in hills that were specifically designed to be protected. So for me, I was, got a little bit of sticker shock. But I do want to explore the idea that we take on the upkeep of at least one street, Hidden Valley, and we help them to decrease those costs that way. Because you are Norcoans, we want to work with you. But understand, we've already, by accepting it, we've already said, hey, I've lived here since 1961. And, but we're going to work with you because you are part of this. And, you know, option two is $38 a month. And anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam America, and belge.
Councilman Newton?
Well, I still, I believe on the deficit, the city needs to be made whole on that. But I do support a five-year plan on repayment. One of my concerns is picking up the maintenance on Hidden Valley and Norco Hills Road. This was always a part of LMD two since the year 2000, that those costs would be borne by the LMD. I think somewhat it's a slippery slope that if we were to forgive or pick up the maintenance on, on those streets, we have areas in LMD four, that, that big irrigated slope that's on Crestview between Wild Horse and Valley. I think a case could be made that why should LMD four have to pay for that huge irrigated slope? That is a community benefit. It doesn't benefit just one property owner. I think you're also going to have some concern at LMD three where you could almost make some of that same case for that LMD. If you look at the, um, the entrance by CVS, where that sign is, that we have to repair all the time. That's the entrance into, um, LMD two that, you know, that's part of the LMD. I think that those costs ought to be paid for by, this is what, you know, lovely, this is what you signed up for when you bought into that neighborhood. So I'm not supporting the city picking up the cost of those, those roadways. I think we're going to find out we could get in some trouble with the other LMDs or certainly make a case for that many. My other concern is that if, if we're to pick up the maintenance on Norco Hills or Hidden Valley or whatever, then you will also be able to enjoy the same level of service that the rest of us enjoy that are not in LMDs. And, which is minimal to none. If you listen to what Bill spoke about California Avenue, where the weeds are growing up as high as the trail fencing, that's what you will enjoy in coming into your neighborhood. high as the trail fencing, that's what you will enjoy in coming into your neighborhood. Because we're not going to be able to maintain it. That's the purpose of the LMD. So, it's kind of where I'm feeling right now with, with that. But at the same time, I'm looking at monthly payment, that I believe we should be made whole. I, I want to find a way, I think we can delay the trail fencing to reduce the, the cost. But, but I think we still need to keep up with all the maintenance on the LMD. And, but it's also up to those residents. They can hold their own vote, and they can vote themselves out of the LMD. They also have that opportunity. Am I not correct on that?
It's still, it's still city council action to dissolve the LMD.
I always thought it was a 50% plus one vote.
No, that's the CFD.
Oh, that's the C, I'm sorry. I thought it was an LMD. Am I confused here? What is it? What can I vote myself out of? Well, I don't need to vote on that. I can look for a job when I found this one.
As it pertains to, as it pertains to this, there's no potential for them voting, literally voting themselves out. It's, it's formed, it's public property of the city, is the one that ultimately makes the decision to dissolve.
See, I was talking to, the residents who vote to go out of the LMD. Understand correctly. That's all I have now, Mayor, thanks.
Councilman Hoffman.
Well, I'm going to disagree with our city attorney, because I lived in an LMD, and I read the Landscape and Lighting Act, knowing you cannot vote yourself out of the CFD, that's your, well, the rules, by the way, because you're, for most of the people here, you're obligated on your tax bills to pay. It was there for that long back to, for LMD2 area, at least till 2930 here. But the other B, and he's going to have to wear the Landscape and Lighting Act, you are correct, it's 51%. We are the board of directors of the city council for the LMD, correct, Dominic? So that's where we are the governing board of all five LMDs in the city. So, and I know John's not going to, he's probably a resources, and I'm sure he will, but I think you're correct, that we can vote yourselves out of the LMD. The money, once it's resolved, any money left in the LMD goes back to the general fund at the city.
The, the process for dissolution, just like the process for formation, is option two.
Okay, but if all the property owners end up in the LMD, and I said, we've come back and looked at, because this is what we're talking about, is, is just, I believe, and I will bring that back in this next time, where I will send you the information. I've got Landscape and Lighting Act, the whole thing, so.
It's reasonable to vote for it.
Very good, all right. So, anyway, back to what we were saying before, and I'll be honest with you, I'm looking at the options, and like the lady was saying, and it's too bad that, I, I, like I said, I live in LMD4, and all kinds of city residents come up there and utilize our arenas in LMD4. They utilize the arena in LMD5, they, well, there's no arena in LMD1, and they'll use the arena in LMD2, all the residents do. The only arena that is private in this city, that is owned by homeowners association, is the JR spread. That is the only one that I'm aware of, that we have to give residents, because that's paid for by the HOA. So, as far as, the debt's got to be paid. I mean, that's a problem. But what I'm looking at is, it's like the lady said, $1,095 is a lot of money, for a fee. Ours is almost up there in LMD4, until we ended up paying for all our fencing at one time, and did that. But that was a totally different subject. So we don't have, we pay for that fencing up there. We pay for the landscaping up there. We pay for it, and that's what we did. But as I'm looking at that, and the debt, and I'm looking at the CFD debt on this thing, I'm wondering, because I'm looking at $1,095, and like the lady said, that's quite a bit jump. I wonder if they're even, they're probably not going to prove to get a voter, or a 218 approval to vote for. Very good, I wouldn't do that. So, you gotta do almost what's an option. But I think what we need to do, when you look at option two, and you go to the $954 one, yeah, it's a hundred dollars less. But it's human nature, that you'll say, well, I'm under a hundred dollars. I mean, it's under $1,000, so maybe I will. But I think that's a better option, and you don't worry about the replacement of the, the fence, and they're going to get the same pension there that everybody else in town does, and that's not, that's not, they're not going to pay for it, that's just bottom line. But what I would like to Steve to do, to do this, and I, I don't want to speak for future councils, but the CFD in those homes, from, or I got from Gina today, was that they'll be done in 2930. And those homeowners will have on an average of $4,000 or $5,000 extra, and their property taxes, they won't be taxed, because those CFDs will be repaid. Maybe that's when they'll be able to better absorb those increases. So, you know, I hate to say let's wait 12 years, if we replace fences up there, but, unless we get some money in somewhere else. That's, that's an option that they're, the residents, that they're going to have to take. But I would be, I mean, and I, you know, I looked at these numbers on Hidden Valley, and we can take care of Hidden Valley Road, and then we took, that was my decision, to look at those two roads. $34,000 on our budget, that would be hard to ask, for the rest of the city to pay for. And I understand, I would split it up and just take over Hidden Valley Parkway, maybe as a city, but we're not benefiting ourselves in the long run. It's, it's, I thought it would be a different number when it came out. So, it's something that, as I look at option two, if we had to put this through 218 here, it's something that the residents may vote for, I would go ahead and do the option two, but without the 10-year plan to fund the trail fencing and just. Is that option number one? Okay, yeah, right there then. And just let them see how we go over, maybe look at it and have them bring it back after their CFD is paid off. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
I agree with most everything that Councilman Bash was talking about, because I was one of those people that were sitting in here at most of the meetings back then, listening to this bill of goods being sold to the council. Because I remember the five acre lots it was supposed to be, and I didn't want them to reduce them down to a half, which they did, they didn't listen to anybody, but one thing I had a problem with, I still got a problem with it, was when they put horse trails on both sides of the street. One trail on the street is plenty, especially with lots of big people riding up there to do down in this area, we get by with one, one trail, that's a big expense. And I remember, I think it was probably 2004, while they were building those homes, we had some mighty big rains, like we get right now. Lot of erosion up there, while they were building those houses. I remember going up there one day, and it was pouring down rain, dirt was coming down the street, truckloads and some driveways going across the horse trail there. That had eroded so bad during the floods, that you could park a Volkswagen under it. That's how big the holes were. It took them several days to scoop that dirt up and put it back where it belonged. But like I said, I think that was a waste of money, putting trails on both sides of the fence, it's just a big expense for maintenance. And I don't yet with all these I choose, but I, I definitely don't think that we should take up the expense of those two streets over there. I think that'll be just like it is. That's all that happened back then, Mayor.
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I just want to, and just so you know, the, some of the expenses that Councilman Cannon was talking about was the trail fencing up there, and the trail maintenance on the DG and the rain. And if you, LMD4 has trails on both sides of the street. One of the things that we, as residents, did up there, under LMD, was pay for the drainage improvements up there. And that came out of the individual own assessment, the LMD assessments. So over the years, residents in LMD4 have done that. Did five do it? No, five did not do it, neither did three. But we have to remember, the Norco Hills, and Councilman Bash has spoken about this, Norco Hills residents, and Steve was sitting back there, always talked about this in planning, was designed as a preservation of the hills, not primary animal keeping. And that's why a lot of your lots are up and down on those hills like that. And they never took that into consideration when they did that. I think two or three are designed that way, correct, Steve? So, but yeah, that's, a lot of the improvements that you'll see that were done on the Norco, in the Norco and Ranger area, have been paid for by the residents that live there. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, so I have a couple, I guess, clarifications. So, when the residents of the LMD voted on the last 218 hearing, it did not pass, correct?
Correct.
So then the comment that you shut off our water and didn't take a vote would be incorrect, right? Because they voted not to give an increase. So as a council, since there was not additional funding to pay for the needs of the LMD, a decision had to be made where cuts would be made, is that correct? Kind of train of, train of thought. So although, we can say that there was never a vote taken to turn off the water, there was a vote taken to not increase the assessment to pay for the water, correct?
And in addition to that, this would be subsidized, that's the repayment, essentially paid for.
And there was a portion of time there that, to try to balance that budget or reduce that, is we reduced maintenance. Then the decision was made later, to, after we had the meeting in the park, to go ahead and continue to subsidize it, or at a higher rate, to, so that they didn't lose that. That, and the decision would be that we would come back and have this discussion run through the team, Mayor.
Okay, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that the vote of the LMD is with the Prop 218 hearing. The result of that either is going to give your council some options with some funding, or it's going to give us options where we have to reduce services, correct?
That is made clear.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Then, Dominic, a question on option one, we would basically be paying back the deficit, and then there would be 2% just to do, like a car crashes into a small section of fence, that 2% would cover that kind of stuff, not complete replacements, correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So they wouldn't go without trail repairs, period, it would just be minimal as incidents arise, correct? Okay, very good. So that's the only questions and kind of comments that I have. Were there any other questions or comments from council? Councilman Newton.
For Brian, in, in LMD4, which I've talked about, that, that one sloped area, we maintain the manufactured slopes, the drainage ditches.
That's right.
What the one resident brought up about syrup line, approved? Does, does LMD2 maintain their drainage structures? I mean, is that an obligation of that LMD, to take care of that drainage issue, where all that material is ending up in front of perhaps?
In some cases, some of the problems are the way in design, is that those, some of that comes off the back of their properties, then comes back around and down in, in, in or across the trail. So in this year's budget, we've added two drains, they just completed designs on those, we've gone out and bid to actually put those new drains in. But we're starting to replace some of those drains, because they have collapsed over time and age. Now, because they're in the right of way, as they come across the trail, then they, the assessment district picks up that cost.
So this is similar to what we had in LMD4, where we had a lot of those under-trail drains rusted out and collapsed? Is that similar to what you're talking about, Brian?
District four, we actually would lay over, because we installed, we had funds in that district, because that district was set up with the ability to do different improvements. So we put in $100,000, $200,000, something like that, with the drainage improvements that took water off of the individual lots and brought it to the street without crossing the trail.
Right, where we added the echo drains and all of that.
There's very few of any of those within District two. What we have is D ditches, draining big slopes that go into a little collection and underneath the, the trail, which that is what's collapsing right now, because they're all cast iron and full of dirt and mud and stuff, and over the years, 20 years, they're rusted out.
Is there, of course, that would, any further mitigation efforts would then become a cost associated with the LMD, that the LMD would have to bear? Other than just cleaning up the debris?
Currently, right now, in the particular case here, we'll go in this week, remove all of that DG, respread it, and clean it up. And in some cases, actually bring some DG in if we need to. But that's a cost that the assessment district can recover, so that becomes an increase to the cost and type of rain conditions we have when we come to year end, because the cost is going to be even higher. So even at the year end of this fiscal year, $83,000 is what we felt would be the deficit. Well, I can tell you it's going to be higher than that, because some of that is beyond what the spoken contract is for the assessment district contract to maintain.
I think right now, the most reasonable one is, is option number one, so it's my concerns. One of my concerns is it does not include CPI.
We, we would include that when it comes back, that it'll have to. The assessment district already has a CPI built in to put on the option one we have. It does show numbers, does not include that, so.
To the measure of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
To sort of tag team off of you, Robin, and one of the residents, basically what's been happening is we're subsidizing something in the hills that the people in the flatlands don't have. That's part of the problem we have, and we've got to figure out a way to make that fair. One of the things measure R hopefully will do is that we'll address some of the trail
Any other comments from council? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make one, I guess. I would move that we put option one to a vote for the Prop 218 hearing.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to put option one to a 218 hearing for the residents of Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right. So with that, we will move to, oh yes, we're past nine o'clock. So we will take a five-minute restroom break, or get up and stretch, ready? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get back to business. So we're going to move to item number six, which is public hearings. Again, the order of the public hearings are as follows. A staff report presentation, council questions of staff, our open public hearing, and again, we would have public speakers in favor, against, or neutral, at a time of three minutes each. We would close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion and council action. So, item 6A is a tentative parcel map, number 37684, and it's a request to combine four existing parcels into one parcel of 2.41 acres, located at 3265 Hamner Avenue, in the CG zone, and we will have Mr. Keen report on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just that, a request to combine four lots, and. This is just that, a request to combine four lots into one. This corresponds to the approved Wood Springs Suites Hotel. It's currently under construction, and it needs to be done before, the map needs to be recorded before they can get occupants in their building. The proposed lot meets all of the minimum requirements that the American Mist code for lots in the CG zone. Plating commission did review this and recommend approval on, as we meet on February 13th. And I'll conclude my presentation and answering questions, and the applicant's representative is on this as well.
All right. Thank you. So with that, I'll ask council any questions from Mr. Newton, has his finger on the trigger, so we'll go ahead and call him first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead, sir.
Steve. I understand that this is a cleanup item. Why was this map, why wasn't this done before we issued a building permit?
Well, the, we actually told the applicant at the very first meeting we had with them, which is project review board, that they had to file the map. They were having trouble getting everything in line, and so they asked to move forward with the approval of the building, and at the time, the understanding from the city was, excuse me, that the map would be forthcoming fairly quickly, didn't come quickly, but that's how we got to where we are. But we told them from the very front that they needed to file that map.
So I mean, even though we are trying to work with them and focus on the success of their project, which we all support, how would it go over today if we don't approve this? They're not going to be too happy.
D, V, I, S?
I believe so. So, I think maybe in the future, we know where nice guys end up, and I think what we ought to do in this situation, if this ever comes up again, is, once it's all done, then we'll issue building permits. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions from council? All right, then we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card from the applicant.
Okay.
Andrew Davies.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just here tonight to thank you for working with us on the issue. A little bit of history on that. It was actually a request that I made to postpone the filing of the map until the final map, until the certain beginning of occupancy. Something that I've seen in other cities, and it's generally how we proceed in the development of the overall parcels. That's your one concern, but happy to address the other concerns you may have. Post-attempt.
I guess my question would be, what is the purpose of waiting on that map until or at a certain beginning of occupancy?
I think the purpose was to just allow us to proceed with construction as soon as possible. I think everybody decided to move forward as quickly as possible. We were ready with our construction drawings and knew that we could do that without having the time for the various public hearings that we would have to have otherwise.
Does anybody else have any questions on that?
Well, I thought you were looking at me. I wouldn't know that statement whatsoever, that you can certainly do your construction and your drawings concurrently as you can do your tentative map.
You mean, well, that's...
This is what you like to do.
Understood.
Okay, that's your statement. That's the way you like to do it. It's not the way I think it's best for our city.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess my only other question of staff would be this repairing of the maps and doing the public hearings. What's the timeline like before it gets to the council? Like, what would the holdup be doing it in the order that we typically do?
The typical way is, in a project like this, they bring the map with the site plan and any needed CUPs, and it all comes together. So you're looking at everything all at once. And then the condition would be that the final map gets recorded before the issues of the building, typically.
So, that's three months, five months, two weeks? What's...
You know, I, I don't, I think it takes maximum about a month to get to your number from the county and then get the map prepared and recorded. So, they can, it's something, certainly where you could be working on your plan check plans while you're doing the record edition of the final map.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and back to council for discussion and council action.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request to combine the board's existing parcels into one. Please vote. All right. Thank you. So we're going to move on to item sixty, which is a tentative parcel map, number 37461 with Caprock Partners. They request to subdivide 22.9 acres into four parcels on property located on the southwest corner of Fifth Street and Horseless Carriage Drive in the M1, which is a heavy commercial light manufacturing zone. And again, Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, this is going out of the way. They're taking 22 acres to divide it into four parcels to correspond to four industrial buildings that are currently under construction on the southwest corner of Horseless Carriage Drive and Fifth Street. All of the proposed parcels meet the minimum requirements of the M1 zone, and Plating Commission looked at this map on February 13th and recommended approval. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Okay. Does council have any questions of staff? Councilman Robin?
I have mine. Steve, what's your advantage to them? I kind of got an idea, but come in there.
You know, it's, there's no advantage to the city. The applicant is in the audience, so he can address that question better than me, what they intend to do with it, if they're going to sell, I don't know. It's really up to them. What the city requires is that each lot meets its minimum standards, which it does. So, they could answer that better than me.
Just an educational process, if he doesn't mind.
Mayor, council, Pat Daniel, CEO of Caprock Partners. Yes, for flexibility, right now, the market is extremely strong for industrial properties. You have a lot of companies that like to own their own business home, and so by doing this, we give that opportunity for the businesses that would occupy each of the buildings, might occupy two of the four buildings, gives the flexibility for that company to acquire and own their own business home, or maybe two buildings, depending on the size and the requirements they might have.
I just wonder why. That makes sense.
Okay. Go for your question.
Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Councilman Newton?
Questions for staff, that's what we're under right now, is a map.
Correct.
Steve. When we first met with Shay Holmes on this, and this was all going to be owned by Shay, and obviously it was sold to Caprock before this request, is that, if I'm correct, this project has four separate domestic water meters, one landscape meter, and I think two fire double detector checks, two meters on that on a loop system. So my question is, what agreements, it would seem to me that this request is so that they can sell these parcels individually, what agreements do we have in place right now that who's going to maintain landscaping if you have four separate owners, and how would those costs be distributed? That's not up to us to decide. And the same with the costs on the fire meters. And then I'm making the assumption that each building owner obviously would have their own domestic water meter. So what do we have in place if we move forward with this?
We don't have anything in place right now in terms of city, except for the conditions of approval, where they are required to maintain the landscaping. How they do that in terms of their own CCNRs, that's up to them. But if, for instance, the project gets divided into four lots, and one of them's not maintaining its landscaping, then we'll go after them through code.
Why would we have to wait to that point? Why can't we take the initiative and say, if you want to have four separate parcels, now add four separate landscape areas or four separate meters, or do something different with the fire lines? I mean, why wait till it's a code case?
Well, nothing says you can't do that. As far as the city, we feel that our conditions were covered, that we can take care of the issue, but it's certainly not the only way to do it, so.
Then I'll wait to the public discussion, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No cards, Mayor.
Okay. Going to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'm...
Unless, do you want to ask him?
I'd like to ask the question of the applicant.
Okay.
Councilman, happy to answer any questions. So, we are putting CCNRs on when we record the map. Those will have standards of what is shared. Those might include the shared access, and how parking is dealt with, along with other items. And so, there will be guidelines and steps to address anyone who's failing to take care of their property. Even if we, the value of these buildings are quite substantial in the investment that someone's going to make to acquire one of these buildings. And so, the cost of the landscaping is going to be relatively small from that standpoint. But if one of the four doesn't adhere, there will be guidelines so the other three can step in and maintain the quality, because, you know, their front door is shared. You know, you've got, if you look at the site plan, there's two buildings that are kind of set back behind, and so the front door is really something common to all four buildings, and when somebody, a visitor or somebody's coming to visit that business. So, it's going to be...
I wasn't going to say that much internally, but it's more on horseless carriage. I mean, you would have a street light you're going to maintain at, hopefully, Fifth and Horseless Carriage, but all that slope landscaping, all along horseless carriage?
That would be part of the project's responsibilities. Yes, sir.
And that's kind of what I was trying to get in my mind, is how is that going to be defined? You have one landscape meter, okay, and four owners. Am I paying for a portion of that out front?
Yeah, based on the square footage of your building. Yeah, so there's, I think, 425,000 square feet, if you own so much of that. So if you've got 80,000 divided by the 425, that's your percentage of those share costs.
And I'm, I'm just asking, I just don't want us to get hung on this down the road. So, we're going to have one meter, we're going to have one account, and who's that account get billed to? That's Gina, looking to eat the stars.
That was a question I had, but my understanding might be a property manager or somebody's going to be handling that.
Yeah, so we will, we will be in charge until the very last building is sold. When that takes over, the largest building will be the declarant, and so under the CCNRs, they are the main party leading the discussion and leading the maintenance of that property. That group will hire a property manager and share the cost of that property manager's responsibility to maintain the property on behalf of all those four owners. That's typically how it's done.
And we're going to send the bill to the property management company.
Yeah, there'll be correspondence and attendance, yeah. So if there's a problem, there'll be someone to always contact. We at Caprock also are going to be, we're planning on being a long-term neighbor here in Norco, so you know where you can find me as well.
And don't take me wrong, I appreciate all our discussions we've had in the past, and you and I are on the same page, but Shay told us the same thing. Okay? I mean, and I don't mean that disrespectfully to you.
Yeah, no. On this property...
I get the game.
Yeah, our end goal on this property is to sell those four buildings.
Right.
But we will set up the procedures in place so that it is maintained, and maintain the standard and quality that's expected from the state forward.
You okay with that, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does any other council member have any questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. So I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-11. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2019-11. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So then we'll move on to item number seven, which is City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications. We'll start with Councilman Hannah.
Love you.
Newton.
Just like to say, the mayor for our tentative CRTA, due to meeting, and so it's, she presents the city very well to a group of people who may not even know Norco.
Something like that exists.
Frank.
Just a quick update. OBD Ceremonies, eight o'clock, Wayne Mason. We will give you a notice, it's a day-to-day situation right now because of the weather. And then, a series of parks closed based on the rain that we've had flooding, clean arenas, and also notifying people not to use the river trails areas as well during this condition, and to, rain subsides and we get a clear up. And then, Ingles is closed right now as we try to deal with all the water and getting rid of it, as today, we've got a break in the afternoon, so we're back in there working. And then, Bright View's out and working to try and get the assessment districts back in shape, which is a challenge, because as soon as we get it, then we have another set of rain, so we're back to a little start from zero. That's something that everybody's, everybody's decision working diligently on. And I'd like to say thanks to, well, first, they were a little bit help in building us up a little bit to, with some of our problems that the assessment districts.
Did you say...
That is what they've advertised, yeah. Yeah, and I get there because of parking.
All right. Mr. Keen.
Nothing more, thanks.
You're welcome. Matt?
Sure.
Nothing. Don't worry. Mr. Hayden.
Just one more thing.
We're ready.
Yeah, sure. So, what I'm asking for is council support to either agendaise or hopefully direct staff to have the following conversation. A few weeks ago, through another jurisdiction, I ran across this idea, and I think for some long-range planning for the city, Berwin, you touched on it a little bit earlier this evening, and what you saw with Caprock, I think would be, would have been a perfect example, but this is to have the conversation on creating a community facilities district to fund city public safety services, police and fire. It can be...
And to new development?
To new development, correct. And looking at, like I said, this would have been a perfect example right here. There would have been no objection to any additional costs, but with Wiley Labs, with River Road property, with the property right north of us here... But with Wiley Labs, with River Road property, with the property right north of us here, and with the Abe Ranch, this, I think, might be a good opportunity to have the discussion. And I think from a long-range business standpoint, it could be a smart thing to do. I did have a, last week, a short discussion with the city manager regarding this. So Andy, if you have any input on... Because you're very well aware of CFDs for city public safety services. I think that's a need and a cost that we're going to have to address every year.
We can come up with a plan. But recognizing that this one not applied to every new development.
Correct.
This one would apply to proper, like, life-scale development in the city of Norco. Yeah, we can come up with a criteria for, for those. And that will be considered as such part of every development that meets that criteria.
Correct. So, I'm off.
No, mic's still on.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So when you get to that point, Steve, I already brought you your own conditions of approval, so you don't really have to write them, okay?
Thank you.
So that's what I'm asking council support for. It's actually, I think, Andy, is it something that we can just direct staff to work on and we don't have to have an agenda discussion?
We can walk on out and then when it's ready, we'll bring it back to the city council on pool.
If you guys all agree.
Does council have any objections?
This distribution property?
Yeah. But if you want something to think about, it would be more, a little more difficult. But if you wanted to expand it into large residential multifamily situations, where your largest impact of public services are, I'm okay with that.
You know, as we're losing the CFDs, I'm not going to get into a lot of discussion, but I'm not a big fan of them. Be honest with you, I'm just, that's why I'm really restrictive on them. But I don't have, I don't have a problem looking at them. Like you said, I'm just one of those things, after having, knowing that you're going to impact 30 years of whoever the tenant is on this property, and all that going with it, it does take effect. But I'll leave that discussion until we see...
Sure. This is actually the kind of CFD that I think you're proposing. It's a tax, it's simply a tax rate, that there's no debt issues. So that it's not a matter of 30 years, frankly, it's forever. But it's a tax rate based upon the cost of providing services.
Like I said, option C, I'm just hoping to see.
Okay, so no objections, staff knows the direction, so. Anything else?
No.
Councilman Bauer?
Just a couple things. Is the scene of breakfast going to be on? Is Andy going to be ready?
We're back. We had some minor cleanup done, but...
We were there today and it was closed.
Yeah, but that's because we're out, but we've still, the drywall's been scheduled and stuff. So for them to just continue to do the scene of breakfast, that, all of the other things are going to be good.
And then, what do we call you, chief of police, or police chief? I have a situation, and I'm going to send you the address. I've got two of them. One is a noise issue, and it's over on Headley Avenue. I'll give you the address here, but I went over there the other day. And the guys doing this are very smart. They see the deputies coming down the street. And I mean, literally, you near this guy's living room, it pounds. And we just can't catch him. And the other one is, there's a dealer that is clearly selling drugs, marijuana off of a property. I'm sure you know about it. And I'll send you the address, and I sat there and watched him. And I mean, they drive a car in the back, the back comes out. They exchanged something that he hadn't seen in the back. They have a round driveway, they go on out. But they're doing something in the house, I don't know what it is. I know that Eric did kind of a sting on them before, and they couldn't get into the safes. But, yeah, yeah, anyway. But clearly, they're selling, and I'm just wondering, given what's coming down, and whether they can bring it into the city, I guess. But this is pretty, and I'll send you the address, I'll send Andy the address. I meant to do it the other day. If we can find out where we stand on that stuff, I'd really appreciate it. And I just, well, we could go in the safe, there's like eight safes. Oh, no, I just, my personal views. I had to just sit there for a couple of hours and see people come in and go. I was really shocked. And they're sleazy, oh, I shouldn't say that. Anyway, they're very interesting people. So I'll send those addresses to you and Andy, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, so the only announcement I have, we have a youth town hall. It's called Empowering Youth to Step Ahead. We'll have a man there as a presenter at Oval Singleton. So that's going to be March 14th at 6 o'clock at Valley Weaver Hall. I'm anticipating a pretty good crowd. Several of the staff members at Norco High School have offered extra credit for health classes and some language arts classes, so I'm pretty excited about it. I think it'll be a great event. I'm really glad that Unload is pressing forward to doing an event for our youth in town. So looking forward to that. And with that... Oh, sorry, that's right. Andy. Mr. Hoffman, I apologize.
Only because I do have a couple, real quick. And Jeff brought this up. Andy, can we get a photograph of the living garden up there at the Pike's Peak Park? It's your anniversary, maybe Brian, your staff, could we get, and get that up on the website? Because it does, it's lost me now. It's looking good. And then you mentioned the trail closed sign. And Crestview and Crestview at the base of the booking rock? There's nothing there that indicates that's closed. And that ground is eroding very bad. Because it was like a truck, two pickup loads coming out of it. And then finally, you guys are going to do your budget stuff here real quick. And I just have, I'm just asking you to look into, we have talked about this several times in here about the security of our building and especially our staff. Can we look at the facility's budget to try to, not try to, but actually work and see what kind of security measures? Other than cameras, some physical barriers up there for the safety of our staff, especially our cashiers. They're out, they're hanging out, and I hope the lieutenant will get one of his city guys in there. Yeah, not just one, but physical barriers involved in that, in your budget process. And then something I, I know you and I talked about, but I was hit up by a bunch of folks that live, elderly folks that live on the west side of town, that were wondering, if you could have lights at Pike's Peak Park, why can't we have lights over at Neil's Pike's Park? Because they like to walk over there and don't want to drive all the way over during the summertime, so. There's no lights for walking on the trails. So anyway, if, when you hear budgets, if you're seeing any budgets, if we could just see how that works and maybe do a little research on them. That way I get those residents on my case. All right, I mean, that's it, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.